Call to order the regular meeting of the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, June 17th. If everyone will please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
In the United States of America, to the record, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, Lord.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Mundt.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers. Mr. Slay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Sanders. Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next item is the minutes from, we've got two, two items here under the minutes. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on March 18th. If there's no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, if a motion is there, a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Mundt.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay. Mr. Binner.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. And then B of that same item, we have the minutes from May 20th of 2021.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Mundt.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. Item seven, are there any disclosures from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Odell.
I've briefly spoken with the applicant regarding Sampson Tree Service, which is 9C.
Okay. Mr. Slack.
I've spoken with Mr. Byers. I have spoken with Mr. Byers in the past regarding putting together a proposal for the Southern Trust Project, which we didn't move forward with, and that was over a year ago.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Slay.
I've also spoken with the applicant from Sampson Tree Service.
All right. Okay, moving on to item eight, public comment. If there's any members from the public wishing to speak on any non-agenda items, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. We'll move right into public hearings. Item 9A, Southern Trust Companies. Madam Secretary, please read the agenda item into the record.
Southern Trust Companies Amendment to the Official Zoning Atlas, rezoning from AG1 Agriculture 1 to IL Industrial Light Zoning District. The 29.24 acre petitioned site is located east of Southern Trust Companies facility, west of Taylor Dairy Road, north of the Fort Pierce Farms Water Control District Canal Number 1 in St. Lucie County, Florida.
Thank you. Staff, Mr. Taher, do we have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Taher Curry, and I'm the Associate Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Agenda item 98 is a petition for Southern Trust Companies for a 29.24 acre parcel located west of Taylor Dairy Road, north of the Fort Pierce Farms Water Control District Canal 1. And the property is west of the existing Southern Trust Companies site located at 2590 North Kings Highway in Fort Pierce. The public hearing was noticed with a sign on petitioned site on Kings Highway and Taylor Dairy Road, a display ad in the local newspaper on June 4th, 2021, and mail notices to property owners within 500 feet. Proof of advertising is provided within the agenda packet. Mail notices were sent out to non-property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. Their planning department did not receive any responses. This is the arrow showing the 29.24 acre site outlined in red. On August 4th, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved a rezone from AG1 to the Industrial Light Zoning District for a 5.27 acre site located northeast, located on the northeast corner of the petitioned site. The 5.27 acre of the 34.51 acre property was approved through a lot split. The future land use designation is towns, villages, and countrysides. The future land use category is comparable to zoning districts that allow for industrial and manufacturing uses. The proposed rezone to industrial light zoning district is consistent with the township, villages, and countrysides future land use designation per the Comprehensive Plan Table 1-3, zoning use designation, zoning compatibility chart. The subject property currently has a zoning designation of AG1. The proposed rezone will conform to the minimum lot size and dimensional requirements in accordance to the Land Development Code, Section 70401. The surrounding properties to the northeast and west consist of industrial light and agriculture 1 zoning designations. This current request for rezone is to support Southern Trust Companies' proposal to expand into a 33,600 square foot manufacturing facility with site improvements and associated stormwater located at 2590 North Kings Highway. The 29.24 acre segment of the undevelopment parcel will be adjoint with existing Southern Trust Companies site to the west. The applicant has submitted a major adjustment to a major site plan to run concurrent with this rezoning request. This petition conforms to the standard review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 110603, and is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan Goals, Policy, and Objectives. Staff recommends this petition be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
No problem.
Are there any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, it's the applicant here and have a presentation. The other, Mr. Curry?
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. For the record, Brad Curry with EDC representing the applicant. I do not have a presentation. I think staff did an excellent job reviewing the application and what's being proposed. Again, this application is to rezone the property so we can join it with the existing Southern Trust property and for their expansion, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Lowndes.
Mr. Curry, Taylor Dairy Road's a narrow dirt road, but is there any way that the applicant can use that as part of his in and out and relieve some of the pressure on Kings Highway?
At this time, we are proposing Kings Highway as our main access point, Mr. Lowndes. We aren't even, the first phase of development doesn't even go all the way out to Taylor Dairy. We're gonna just be basically the western half of the property. Everything on the west side of that upland area that you're seeing there is all we're gonna use. So, we're not even gonna go all the way out to Taylor Dairy under this application. In the future, it could be. My client actually also owns the property to the north as well, and we talked about potentially having a roadway going out to St. Lucie Boulevard. We haven't gotten that far yet. He's in a little bit of a hurry to get this expansion done because he's busting at the seams right now. So, we're trying to get this expansion done, and then we're gonna go back to the drawing board and determine the future of the rest of the property.
I'm just curious because Kings Highway's fixing to get busy with, if they ever finish it.
Yes, sir. We understand that, and we are gonna be having a meeting with DOT to make sure that our access and everything is acceptable to them. We really aren't, the expansion, you know, he, he's not really hiring any people. He's basically building the trusses out in the open now, so he's trying to get a cover over top of it. It's really the only thing that we're getting.
He just needs more space to spread out.
Yes, sir, for storage as well, for the storage of the trusses once they're done. That whole area will be the storage of the trusses, so, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Currys. If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the request as it meets the goals and objectives of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan.
Motion is a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Mundt.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowndes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. All right, motion approved. Moving on to item 9B, CB Liquor LLC. Madam Secretary, please read the item.
CB Liquor LLC Conditional Use Permit to Allow a Retail Liquor Store with No On-Site Consumption at 10800 South US Highway 1, Port St. Lucie, Florida, in the Chris Plaza within the CG Commercial General Zoning District in St. Lucie County.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Curry with a presentation.
Yes, thank you. For the record again, Taher Curry, Associate Planner. Agenda item 9B is a conditional use petition for CB Liquor LLC to allow a retail sale of package alcoholic beverage for off-site consumption at 10-800-SOUTH-US-HIWAY-1. In accordance with public notice outlined in Section 11003 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on June 5th, 2021. Notices were mailed out to 15 property owners within 500 feet. A sign was posted on the petitioned site. The planning department received one response not in favor of the conditional use petition. The subject petition outlined in red is a 6,000 square foot retail plaza that has access on South US Highway 1 and Leonard Road. The site features various businesses and commercial retail. The subject site has a commercial general zoning designation. In accordance to the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, the Commercial General Zoning District, liquor stores are classified as a conditional use within a commercial general zoning district. CB Liquor Stores proposes a retail sale of packaged alcohol beverage such as beer, wine, and liquor for off-site consumptions. To the east and west of the petitioned site is a St. Lucie County, is a city of Port St. Lucie General Commercial Zoning District, and to the north and south is a St. Lucie County Commercial General Zoning District. The retail liquor store is proposed on the west corner of the Chris Plaza at 10-800-SOUTH-US-HIWAY-1. The space was previously an printing office. Notices were sent out to 15 property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. The planning department received one response not in favor of the conditional use permit to the south. This petition conforms to the standard review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 110703, and is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan Goals, Objectives, and Policies. Staff recommends that this petition be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions. The hours of operation shall comply with the code of ordinance of St. Lucie County Land Development Code and the state Florida statutes, Chapter 561. Number two, a minor adjustment to the conditional use is required for a change in business name and/or ownership before a zoning compliance certificate is issued. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Are there any questions of staff on the board? Commissioner Lowe.
Question. The petition is for the packaged store, and it's no onsite consumption, right?
That's correct.
So, the license that will be issued to them will not permit that?
Correct.
Not, it's not just the county?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, the license they have to get will not allow onsite.
Right, that's correct. It's just for a liquor store with no onsite consumption.
Mr. Mundt.
Mr. Lowe covered it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good question. Why the second condition added about change of owner or change of name?
Okay, anytime we have a conditional use, and someone, say if he is selling it to someone and they're keeping that same use, they have to go through the conditional use process, but it is a minor adjustment to that conditional use. It doesn't have to go to the board, but it has to go through a minor adjustment to that conditional use, amending what was previously approved.
Would that affect the saleability of the business, though? Could it be revoked or just changing the name or the owner?
Just changing the business name.
It was just more paperwork?
Correct.
Not like if he tries to sell it, he wouldn't, he would be denied?
Correct, it just goes through that transitioning of paperwork.
Another quick.
Mr. Lowe.
Can you also put in, as a matter of record, the, read the one fellow that did write a note about it? There's a school or something nearby or? June 11th.
You want that read? Madam Secretary, would you mind reading that?
Yes. June 11th, 2021, to St. Lucie County Planning and Development Department, Associate Planner Taher Curry. Our building is just north of the proposed site, 60 feet to it. It is behavior basics, has been there for 15 years, caters to kids with behavioral issues from three to 12 years old. Parents drop off their kids and pick them up. We don't think that site liquor store is suitable for that area, that close in proximity, and patrons throwing bottles and beer cans around in general adversely affects that area and the businesses. Thank you. Engen Karabulat, American Stars and Stripes LLC, 772-626-1741.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? Is the applicant present? They have a presentation or anything? You're not required to, we're just, I'm just asking. Someone just come say hi.
I just have any presentation, but if you guys have any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant from the board? Do you operate any other liquor stores in the county?
No, sir, but I have a restaurant with beer and wine.
Okay.
Have you got your license now for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One other quick question. One of the questions that this fellow had on that thing was he's worried about the condition of the property. Are there gonna be cans around there and bottles and trash? Will you be monitoring that?
No, sir, it would be, I mean, in fact, because it's just like take and go. So, somebody just buy it and they just leave it because we're not, there's no place for people to drink or anything like that because we're not selling for them to drink. It's just take and go. It's just like same as, same clubs or Walmart because we, between same and Walmart, they doing exactly the same thing, so people just buy and get the car and just leave. It's not, we know, we just located between Walmart and same as clubs, so it'd be the same as, as that, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. My name is Deborah Swanson, and I apologize for not having a formal written objection sent in prior. I do have one. I did pass these out to my tenant, but for the record, I am one of the property owners. I'm the president of San Piper Plaza, the shopping center just to the north of this plaza. And I find myself in a very unusual and peculiar position because having been a Realtor in this community for 45 years, former CEO of the Association of Realtors for 12 years, and an owner of a commercial property, I'm normally not one to object to businesses coming into locations that are commercial general. However, in this case, I do have an objection, and I'd like to list some of the reasons that I do. First of all, within a mile radius, there's already, I believe, five different liquor stores. You have Walmarts directly across the street. You have Sam's literally walking distance directly behind it. A new one just opened up in Town South Plaza, which is within a mile just to the, not Town South, what is where Planet Fitness is and Bell's, Bell's is, one just opened up there near. You have BJ's, which is in Martin County, but it's in within the mile distance. And you have Second Base Beverage, which is on the, right past Morningside and Port St. Lucie Boulevard. So, this would be a sixth one. And my objection is, that's one of the reasons. The second one is, we have a vacant property tract, about a two acre tract to the north of us, and we do get several homeless people that do live back in the woods back there. And unfortunately or fortunately, we have a fountain, and we find a lot of people want to decide they want to bathe in our fountain. I'm not sure if a liquor store is gonna cause more problems than not. And I know that at one time in that plaza, there used to be a medical supply, and people would overshoot their driveway, so they would pull into ours and park, and then walk around on our property to go around to it. And I'm afraid that's maybe gonna happen here with the liquor store, especially with it being new. People are gonna say, oh, liquor store, eh! And with the construction over the last few years on US 1, our driveway coming in, we used to have a DXL lane that we had to put in and pay for. Well, that's disappeared, and now our cut into our plaza is very short, and you're almost on top of our fountain, and cars are going 50 miles an hour, 55 on US 1. And what's happening is they're coming in and they're hitting our plaza. So, I'm afraid if somebody's already a little inebriated and they miss that turn into the liquor store, they're gonna be coming into our plaza, and I'm afraid I'm gonna have more damage to this fountain. And I thought about taking it out, I have to be honest with you, but then I have my light pole right there, and I think I'd rather them hit my fountain than my light pole, so, my parking lot. But anyway, I appreciate your, you know, consideration. Particularly, it's not like we don't have enough in the area to, where somebody can't take their choice where they'd like to shop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Any other members from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, board. My name is Jim Crist, and we are the owners landlords of Crist Plaza. We are the original builders and have owned it since its inception, since 1985. We've had this gentleman that has proposed to put a liquor store in, and something that we adamantly put in, in our contract with them for the lease is no onsite consumption. Because that's not the type of business we want. We don't have the resources for it. We don't have the parking for onsite and people to stay there. We've run this and have a respectable building for many years. As Swanson, was it Ms. Swanson, had mentioned, we had to put in a DXL lane years ago, too, until the widening, and that was our expense. That was taken away. We are just north of the red light at Leonard. So, cars sometimes stopping from the red light to proceed, so they're not going at a high rate of speed. Sometimes they are, but that's up and down US 1 wherever you are. There's turn lanes, there is no turn lanes to access all the businesses up and down US 1. As far as additional liquor stores, that is correct. There's a number of liquor stores around. We can't control that. Our enterprise is no different than what the rest of the people intend to do. We've had this vacant for almost a year, and we've been very diligent in who we have wanted to represent us because we've run a clean facility over there. We have had, speaking of homeless people, we've had a couple behind our building as well because we are just to the, and so whether it's from their property, the vacant property that they have that needs to be more enforced by Sheriff's Department or something to get them moving along, I don't know. But we have had that issue. I know in that plaza, they maintain a nice plaza, too, but they have had restaurants in there that have served beer and wine. They've had a BYOB, after-hours party, and we had a lot of problems with that years ago with bottles and stuff like that on our premises, on our rooftop. So, I don't think we're gonna have that here. This is strictly, pick your package up and leave. It's, there is no onsite consumption. I actually put that in our lease because we don't want that. Purchase it and leave, and that's all. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair. I have a question for the speaker.
Mr. Chris.
Mr. Chris.
Phil.
Mr. Chris.
We have a question for you. Come back up, please. Mr. Mundt.
Yes.
How many stores are in your strip mall there?
That would be the fifth tenant.
How many are there?
There's 6,000 square feet.
And how many units are there in total?
Well, there's 6,000 square feet. There's a 10 units, and there are approximately 600 square feet each. And some of them have multiple bays. This would be multiple bays, as well as one of the other tenants.
Okay, so you have some additional vacant space?
No, this would occupy the balance of what we have remaining.
So, you'd be fully occupied, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chris, one more quick question. Who does the maintenance for your property?
We have a lawn maintenance that comes weekly, and they also pick up the trash when they come.
Once a week?
Yes, sir.
Nobody sees it after that, or are they trash?
Well, I mean, I can't say nobody sees it. Somebody can come by at any time and toss trash out, but we do keep our property clean, and I do go out there myself. I live in Fort Pierce, and I do go back and forth to visit our property. And I'd pick up stuff sometimes, too, when I'm there.
Are there containers outside for trash?
We have dumpsters out there, and we have, we have two. We have one for trash, and we have one for recycling as well.
I wish you well, and wish them well, and I wish, I know you're, I know Deborah very well, so I hope you guys make good, good partners.
Well, we haven't, we've not had any issues in the past, but it's just, you know, everybody's in business. We're all trying to occupy, get our places occupied, and we had somebody come by that actually was more respectable than some of the other things that we had that we did not want. We absolutely just refused to rent to them.
Wish you well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, yes.
Mr. Odell.
Is there a way we could kind of address the traffic issue that Ms. Swanson had? I'm trying to picture that, but I can't quite, you know, I know the location, but I can't quite picture the, the traffic problem that, that you were proposing. Okay. Okay.
I will make one.
Debbie, you're gonna have to come up to the mic.
Debbie, you gotta come up here.
Yes, please.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
May I answer that? Make a comment to that as well. Our property has access from the east and west side, which is very convenient and is a lot safer than trying to have to come from one direction. So they can enter the property, go back out eastward to Leonard Road, and do, uh, go to the red light as well, instead of just coming back out of the property, right onto the ongoing traffic. So we have duplicate access in the Gris.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and please don't get me wrong, Jim and I, we've been good neighbors. We built our plaza in eighty-two and, and with your mother, is originally built, and my parents originally built. So we've been friends and we've worked together over the years, so that's not really the issue. And, and like I said, I find myself in a very peculiar position. It, but if, to get to your question, and, and I do want to make one other comment if I could. We're the L-shaped building, it's got the white roof. You can see the fountain to the front, um, the round fountain. What I'm talking about is where, that's it, where their parking lot is, sometimes people will overshoot that. So they will come into ours, and you can see where the sidewalk is, and where US One, you're almost right into our fountain, and you can see with the way the cut is for our drive. And that's just been caused over the years with the extension of US One widening. And it's unfortunate, like I say, I've had three people in the last two years hit that, that fountain. Um, but again, I'd rather that than my parking lot lights, because that's more expensive than repairing the fountain sometimes. But I, that is one of my concerns, but, and I'm, and I'm sorry, and I failed to mention when I was up here, one of my tenants, I did send this out to all my tenants because I did want their opinion. And I did have one tenant that did write to me that they objected, and it was one of the tenants I had concerns with. We do have an adult arcade in, in our plaza. And not to say, they do not allow smoking nor drinking within their premises. However, that doesn't mean that people that are in there playing the slots don't come out and have a cigarette. Maybe don't bring a beer in their own cooler in their car, because I will tell you, we found along the side there of the shrubs, beer bottles. We have someone pick up our premises three times a week. We actually have someone come in twice a week, and then another one come in a, a third time a week with the, with the big truck with the brushes on it to sweep the lot, and they also empty. We have about five, five or six trash cans there, wall trash cans. But that is one of my concerns as well, when I, when this notice did come in, I thought, oh geez, the arcade, I can just see them now, they're going to be out, they're going to, they're going to run out of their beers, and they're going to run over to the liquor store, and we're going to have more bottles and more trash. And then I'm going to have them inebriated going back into the arcade and saying, I was on that machine, it's ready to hit, and I just, I just didn't want to, and I'm not saying that's going to happen, but certainly as a, as an owner of a property, you do worry about those types of issues.
All right.
So I did want to mention that, that owner, that tenant did have an objection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bridgers.
Um, Mr. Chris, um, do you mind, what, um, uh, businesses do you have in your, in your plaza?
That we currently have?
Yes.
We have a beauty salon, we have a alterations and dry cleaners. Off, they, that's a drop-off dry cleaner, we don't do on-premises dry cleaning there. We have a beauty supply store that also, they have several other locations around the area. And, uh, gowns, Gala Gowns, which does, um, quinceaera and wedding gowns and that sort of thing.
Okay. I, I know, um, I didn't, wasn't sure which plaza, but there were some churches in, uh, plaza in that area there, I believe. Okay, is it a Haitian church? I know, doesn't it have a, um, entrance and exit off of Leonard Road as well?
It doesn't have an exit. That's to the north of us. There is, yeah.
Okay, that's the one then, okay. I was just curious in that, in that realm, but that's fine, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Here. What do I do?
Well, it's I can't control it, it's just like you said, there's Walmart, Sam's, there's numerous places around convenience stores that anybody can go to any package store or convenience store and pick up what they prefer to drink, and bring it with them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions of the applicant or staff from the board?
Yes, the county.
Uh, we are still in the public hearing, uh, if there's anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Commissioner Lo.
Um, if anybody, if this tenant ever moves out, license, of course, doesn't go with it. Nobody can just come in and start serving liquor, need a license, again, a different license.
That's correct, and that's where the adjustment will come through with conditional use, depending on what they're proposing.
Hey, any other questions or discussion from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hermon.
I'll, uh, recommend to approve, uh, staff, uh, recommendation.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Slade.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Mund.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridgers.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Slay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Benner.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lowens.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lo.
Ma'am.
Chair Taylor.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here, everybody. Moves forward on item nine B. Thank you, Mr. Chris. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on to item nine A, Sampson Tree Service. Madam Secretary, please read the item.
Sampson Tree Service Conditional Use Permit to Allow Land Clearing and Yard Trash Recycling Operation with Mulching in the U Utilities Zoning District on the southwest five acres of the subject, eighteen point thirty-eight acre property for a project known as Sampson Tree Service.
Thank you. Um, Bethany, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Chair Taylor and members of the board. For the record, Bethany Grubbs with the Planning and Development Services Department, presenting agenda item nine C, a request for a conditional use permit for a five-acre land clearing and yard trash recycling operation with mulching on behalf of Richard Sampson and Lucky Thirteen Holdings LLC. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in section eleven oh 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 three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune on June fourth. Notice and response forms were mailed to all property owners located within a five-hundred-foot radius of the subject property, and a sign was installed on the property notifying the public of tonight's public hearing. The property is located at twenty-one oh oh one Orange Avenue in Fort Pierce, on the south side of Orange Avenue, approximately one mile west of Snead Road. This is an aerial perspective of the overall eighteen point three four acre property. The area outlined in red indicates the subject site. The area outlined in blue indicates the five-acre proposed conditional use boundary on the southwest corner of the property. This is an aerial, sorry. While the majority of the property is zoned Ag five, the proposed conditional bound, use boundary is zoned utilities with an Ag five future land use designation. The proposed project is compatible with the surrounding properties, with the exception of the contiguous utility zoning. All surrounding properties are also designated by the Ag five zoning district and future land use. The operation is limited to recycling and processing of land clearing and yard trash, and wholesale of recycled mulch, with no composting proposed. Operation of the land clearing and yard trash recycling facility is year-round, Monday to Friday from seven AM to four PM. Saturdays are from eight AM to four PM, with three onsite employees. A major site plan has been submitted to accompany the conditional use petition, which requires review and action by the Board of County Commissioners. The application estimates ten truckloads of yard waste and debris will be delivered daily. The proposal entails four hundred by one hundred and forty-five stockpile pads and one one hundred by one hundred and forty-five relocation pad. The corresponding phases consist of sorting, mulching, and material dyeing. The project proposes mulching as a component of the yard waste recycling operation, Sampson Tree Service, the applicant's tree trimming and landscaping business. The materials will be collected and delivered onsite by the applicant's landscape operation. The entire process of recycling, processing, and storing the vegetative yard trash and land clearing debris will con, will total less than sixty days. The mulch is either removed by Sampson Tree Services trucks to use on existing landscaping jobs, or removed by a vendor. Each of the four pads are designed to stockpile approximately four thousand cubic yards of debris. Certain wood types will remain natural and other wood types dyed. The oak and pine material are separated from other yard waste and debris to be mulched and made available in their natural state. The mulch may be dyed into the four colors, black, brown, golden, and red. Pad three is designed for the dyeing over a mulched bed. The dyeing process occurs by a spray bar inside of a grinder, which disperses the dye. The dye is stored in fifty-five gallon barrels located here in the corner. The heavy equipment is stored on a, on a stockpile pad that is not in use at the time. As required by code, the recycling yard will be surrounded by an opaque vegetative buffer eight feet in height. The site plan denotes a twenty-foot wide perimeter green belt strip and associated landscaping, consisting of a four-foot tall berm and a full, four-foot tall continuous opaque hedge with eight-foot tall native trees every thirty linear feet. Pursuant to Land Development Code section seven ten twelve, alternative surfaces may be considered for access aisles between stockpiles when land clearing and yard trash recycling operations are located outside of the urban service boundary, as approved by the Board of County Commissioners and upon certification of the Public Works Department, um, through the conditional use department, permit. The, the project proposes asphalt millings for the access aisles between the stockpiles. Due to operational constraints and the relatively small size of the operation, staff is supportive of the alternate paving surface. The base area on which the stockpiles are located is proposed as stabilized mulch and shall be designed to prevent runoff from entering the processing and storage areas. Public Works has certified this petition, and the specifications will be reviewed through the site development permit process. This slide highlights the various equipment that will be traversing the site. The top right highlights the chipper. I've also included the pounds for each vehicle, with the roto chopper chipper appearing to be the heaviest. Seven surrounding property owners were notified by mail within the five-hundred-foot radius. We did not receive any returned responses from those property owners, nor did I receive any phone inquiries. In accordance with Land Development Code section eleven oh seven oh three, staff has reviewed the petition to ensure the conditional use does not have a negative effect on the environment, adjacent properties, public facilities, fire protection, and is consistent with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. Staff finds this petition and to meet the standards of review is set forth in sections eleven oh seven oh three of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code and section seven ten twelve, and is not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Board fish, forward this petition to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions of approval outlined in the agenda packet. The draft resolution contains twenty-three conditions of approval. The detailed conditions of approval are within your agenda packet, and they concern generally acreage buffering, dimensional compliance, operational requirements, along with annual inspection requirements by the Fire Department and the Code Compliance Division. Condition number twenty-three states that all category one listed species, um, invasive plant species shall be eradicated from the site. This includes requirements for ongoing site maintenance. If Brazilian pepper seeds are dispersed and germinate onsite, they must be eradicated at that time. If it is found that these conditions have been violated, the project may be subject to, to a revocation hearing before the Board of County Commissioners. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant's representative are available to answer any questions, and the applicant also has a presentation.
Thank you, Bethany. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
What type of operation was previously at this location?
The operation was previously approved in the two thousands for one, a rezoning, to the utility district you see today, and a yard waste recycling facility that had a special conditional use permit for an air curtain incinerator.
So basically, they would be looking at pretty much a smooth transition to this type of operation.
Well, the conditional use permit was revoked, um, so this is a new application. Um, and therefore, the use was established at one point in time on the property. However, um, this is a new applicant, new petition, new site plan, um, and they are not proposing the air curtain incinerator, but rather a chipper.
One other question that I have, it looks like under these conditions, there's a whole shopping list.
There are.
Uh, the only one that would probably be a little bit of a hardship, it's requiring a bond. Is there a bond required for this?
There is, um, based off of the size of their property and the scope of the operation, it's a fifty thousand dollar bond that they'll be required to, um, to put into the county, to pay to the county in case that the site does have non-compliance issues and needs to be cleaned up.
Is there a way that this could be waived?
I am not sure of that answer, Catherine.
That, that's specifically in the code, as far as I understand.
Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri, um, it is specifically outlined as a requirement of the code.
Typically, with the supplemental standards, there's usually not waiver provisions.
Thank you. Ms. Hermon.
Chair, thank you. There are, I saw two retention ponds on the site that the drainage will feed into. And then I read where, um, is it the material itself that will sit on a permeable pad? Is it underneath the, uh, material? Will water be draining through the pad that the material sits on?
I, I may like to defer that to the applicant's agent, I would be inclined to say yes, the water would, would go through that. It is only stabilized mulch and dirt.
Well, maybe I'll ask the applicant if he makes a presentation, a question, then, thank you.
Mr. Slack.
Has the Fire Department reviewed this and ensured that they can re, reach a fire that would be at the center of the pad?
Yes, the Fire District did have their site inspection, and they have certified off the petition through the DRC process.
What is the water source for firefighting in this case?
They have a pond, and there's a, a connection line here with a box and a pump. And the hose is along this area here.
Mr. Lo.
I, I know if you're able to answer this question. They're going to use dyes.
That is correct.
Treatment of this material. And there's water around here, and where the water goes. You know how, what type of dye this is? I, I did have, I read this whole thing, and it, truthfully, it had a very complete report, I thought. But can it, can they, maybe the owner should know or tell us a little bit about these dyes? What dye are they going to use, can they get into the water?
I could speak a little bit while, Mr. Curry, but the dyes are all natural to the environment. Um, for the black, they're using carbon, um, they're using iron oxide. Um, and they're, they did provide the, the safety sheet for what happens if there is contamination to what the protocols are, what the protocols are, and the agencies you have to notify. Um, I am aware of carbon and iron oxide, but that's the extent.
And they're going to be stored over here at the other end of the property?
Correct.
Fifty-five gallon drums or something, is that, how is it?
Correct. That's where the pump it, the pump house is, they're going to be storing it right over there.
They're not flammable, this?
I don't have that answer. I don't have that answer.
Let's, do you want to go ahead and do the applicant's presentation if you're ready? I don't believe they're flammable. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the safety data sheets are in there. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Rich Sampson, Sampson Tree. I've also been a resident in this area since the early seventies, so. Been around a little bit.
Seen your trucks around.
Been around for a little bit, thirty-two years this year.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Brad Curry with EDC, representing Mr. Sampson. We have a short video here, it's about a minute. I plan on going through and pausing it a couple of places just to show some of the particulars. A little bit weird sitting here, by the way, I don't think I've ever sat here. So this opening picture shows the types of trucks that will be bringing the material to the site. We call those the grapple truck. That truck has the ability to traverse the entire five-acre site. It can go over the mulch piles, it can go on the, in the driveways. The way the mulch piles and the driveways are set up, it's able to handle something of this weight. This truck would come in and either pull the material out of the grapple and dump it on the pad, but this truck will be right on the pad. You're looking south right now, from Orange Avenue, looking south. That is an electric gate that is there now to keep people from coming and going, and the people that are using the facility now have a clicker that they can click and open that, so it is a secured facility. So not just anyone can come in there. So as the video goes, there's, I complained to Rich a little bit about the video, I think we spent a little bit too much time on the road, but I'm going to hopefully fast-forward and get through it. So I just want to show you a couple of things about the road. This road is a millings road, and it's part of that text amendment that we got approved back a couple of months ago to allow something other than asphalt or concrete. I did turn the sound down just because I thought it was a little bit annoying. So that's looking towards the west as you pan around, that's that north end of the property, and as you go to the south there, you can see that is the access road. The five acres, that's a part of this application, you can hardly even see it here because of all the vegetation on the north end, but down at the very end of that roadway is where the mulching operation will be. I also wanted to point out along the left-hand side of the road, you see those sprinkler heads there. They are sprinkler heads that are used to water that road down to keep the dust down, and they are all the way down, you'll see that. Mr. Sampson runs those almost every night to keep the dust down on this roadway. That water is used, is taken from a canal to the south, and he does have a water use permit from North St. Lucie River Water Control District to use that water. And as we go down the road, this would be the road that the trucks use to access it, the trucks that are taking the material in and also removing the mulch. There's two types of mulch that will be leaving this facility, the colored mulch that will be placed on the ground at your house or my house or whichever house, and then there's the other mulch, which is the mixed mulch that's taken to an off-site facility and processed additionally. So that is the proposed building. The building really doesn't have anything to do with the facility, you don't really need to have a building. This is the rotor chopper that Mr. Sampson's purchased, it's a diesel-powered machine. This picture shows facing basically west, and you can see the machine is there, and it's actually dying mulch now. I like this picture, it shows a couple of things. The truck, the tractor that you see over here is a tractor that is on-site, and it moves the mulch around into piles. This is a loader that actually loads the mulch into the rotor chopper. This is like a service truck that they use to just service the facility. Here in these two pictures, this is the actual dye tank that is used to dye the mulch. The wetness that you see around here is the excess dye. That's the total amount of excess dye. I don't know how many people have been out there to see this, but I think the, that some people would think that the dye is running everywhere and the whole facility is wet, but that's not the case. Really, this is the amount, this, the rotor chopper is computerized to where it puts the minimal, most minimal amount of dye into the mulch. Again, dye is expensive, and Mr. Sampson doesn't want to waste a bunch of dye on the ground, so we don't have a lot of dye that actually leaks out from the facility. You can see some of the mixed mulch over here to the, mixed piles of things over here to the right. The, as we zoom out, you'll see the white mulch, so in order to, before they dye the mulch, they chop it one time, and it's separated into hardwoods and into pine. And the pine is one pile because it's really white, and he can sell it that way. The darker, some of the oak roots and oak stumps and those sorts of things come out a little bit darker, so you would have to dye that with a darker material. So I'm going to go ahead and move a little bit forward here just so you can see a little bit more. As you're going around, you see the mulch coming out the top. Again, that's twice-ground mulch that's had to dye, and I think that's brown, or is that red?
That's brown.
Brown. You can see the loader loading the mulch in, you can see this, the other tractor moving the mulch around. I also wanted to point out that this is the haul road, or the road across that surrounds the, all of the pads. So that's the millings road that you see around, and that's used, again, every truck, everything can ride on that. The trucks that come in, all the tractors, this actual rotor chopper is movable, it's got tracks on it, so it can move from pad to pad, and it can cross across those. It's important that this surface that the mulching is taking place on is somewhat soft so that the trucks can go around. If that was hardened concrete or asphalt, it would be broken up very quickly. And I just want to remind you that the material that we're doing on this facility is going to go on the ground somewhere, whether it be on the ground here, or whether it be on the ground at someone's house, it's going to go on the ground. So, keep on, I wanted to show this picture real quick. This is in the upper left-hand corner of the screen, that's that mixed mulch, that's palm, palms, other types of material that's not the clean pine or oak. And that's on that last pad, pad number four. And what happens is that gets up to a certain amount, and then we, they would move the rotor chopper over to that pad, they would mulch that, and that's the material that gets taken off-site. That's not being put on the ground here locally, it's going to be taken off-site to process. And I think this is a great picture too, because you can see, this is the, what color, what mulch is this here?
That's gold.
Gold, and then?
The middle's natural.
And then this is brown.
Brown, and we have black and some red. Right now, the brown's really hot. I mean, you can't keep enough brown around right now.
That's what I have.
Brown's nice.
I can belch for that.
I like the brown.
So again, now that we're facing south, and this is that pad number four where that mac, that mixed material is. This is the north end, again, not part of it, I think Rich just likes to show his building off, so with a symbol on it, that lucky thirteen is favorite thing there. So that kind of outlines everything that we're doing. I wanted to talk about the intent here is that the southern piece is independent of the northern piece. The five acres that we're getting the conditional use approval on is really independent, the stormwater is independent down there. Those ponds that you see on the remainder of the property, really, we shouldn't mix any of the stormwater with the five acres with the stormwater on the rest of the property. I don't have a site plan here in front of me, but the way it drains, it drains from the west towards the east, and there's some small little swale areas right along the east side of the piles, and then that gets filled up when it, if it, it doesn't ever get filled up because it drains so well out there. But if it was a bad storm event, that would get filled out and overflow into another swale that's further to the east along the east side of the haul road. That gets filled up, and then it outfalls to the north into a ditch to the north. So really, there's no interconnection of the ponds to the north on the existing property, it's done through the swales on the five acres, and then it goes, outfalls to the north towards Orange Avenue. We talked about the fire. I don't know if we showed that in any of those pictures. I did want to point out one thing. So this is facing west, that all the fire protection is behind this picture. You see this hose coming through here? That's actually being fed by the fire suppression system that's on the property. So Rich hooks that hose up to a fire department connection, turns the pump on and uses that water in order to do the mulching. It doesn't show, it might have been, we would show a good picture, but at each pad, there's actually a fire department connection that, when you flip the pump, it pumps, how much, Rich, did you say?
Twelve hundred gallons a minute.
Twelve hundred gallons a minute at each, at each pad, and the Fire District's been out and reviewed it, and they have, they're in full support of the design of the pads and also the design of the fire protection.
We also have a five-hundred-gallon four-wheel-drive power wagon truck out there, it's always full, that can go right to a spot and put any hot spots out, and then we have a two-thousand-gallon tank that can gravity-feed that five-hundred gallons in five minutes. We're set up for anything that might happen. Mr. Langle and I, when I started this, we talked extensively about it because it's a big deal fires. And what I did, he really liked, and I took it to the next level, and he was really concerned about his trucks being able to get all the way around those pads without touching trees or rocks or anything. And so it's wide open, you can drive anything around it, you know, without effort, and it's working really flawless now. And that's a two-hundred-foot hose, and so it'll reach the middle of the pad anywhere, so.
So I think that, I don't have the dye sheets with me, I emailed those and didn't print those out, but the dye is organic and they're, I reviewed it, and I'm not a, you know, chemical expert, but it seemed like it was pretty minor things. I don't remember some of the wording on it, but it didn't seem to be that bad. But what I will tell you is that this mulch, whether it's on the ground here, it'll be on the ground somewhere when it's all done. So the intent is that it is organic, and it's not going to cause any kind of contamination. And this mulch, Rich, how long will this pile that you see here of the brown, how long will that stay on this facility?
Few weeks at the most, as is the mixed mulch. We ground pad four today, they'll have hundred-yard walking floors in there Monday, and we'll be hauling it all out, it'll be all gone by next week. Like I said, we're a very small site, I'm OCD, I like everything organized and clean, so as soon as we grind that, I have a facility that takes it, they move it out, way out west, and it's gone. So then we can start to process over, and it's, so far, it's been working flawless. So there, I want to say also, I don't take pallets in, I don't take two-by-fours in, there is no other wood going through that machine besides organic material, pine, oak, and then all the mixed wood. So everything there is organic. You know, the PT wood has a lot of arsenic in it, that's a big deal. So all we're doing is a hundred percent organic, then we're recycling everything. I've got that, they kind of had the one machine mislabeled, the big orange machines, a shear, and that can take huge root systems and cut them down to pieces, and I recycle those as well, so there's nothing not being recycled back into usable product.
Rich mentions a shear because it's his favorite machine, it's like a pair of scissors that goes in and tears everything up. He always likes to mention that.
Big scissors. I hadn't had a question yesterday, what, and it was answered, but maybe you can speak to about invasive species going into the mixed wood, and I think the process kills the seeds and all that, right?
Yeah, the heat does, and actually, the mulch, this type of mulch, we're using only logs. All the branches and all the small, the peppers, anything we bring in, that all goes into our mixed piles. You won't catch one pepper branch or any other type of invasive species in there. If you, like, right now, we have a nice pile of logs, we got a pile of oak logs, and we got a pile of roots. All the mixed stuff goes into the big piles, and they love it with that mix that we, where we bring it. So all we are using in our mulch is hardwood and native stuff. The pepper trees, to answer your question, yes, the seeds and the heat will die through, if they sit in the pile long enough.
Would, I don't, if they, if the seeds did?
Well, they'll germinate in your yard, if they go in there, and they, you know, they're not?
Yeah, so the mixed mulch would be the only thing that would have anything like that in that pad four, and that's the reason he keeps it separate? And so if anything were to sprout up, he would take care of it as part of the ongoing maintenance of the facility.
Any questions from the board for the applicant? Mr. Munt?
Some basic questions. I assume that the purpose of dyeing the mulch is so that when it goes out, it blends in with landscaping?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The pads are, is that a permeable material? Okay.
Yes, sir. You can see in this picture that's here, I mean, that is, you know, that, this machine leaks a little bit, just a tad bit, I mean, if you've been out there, that's the amount, and you can walk on that, that's not puddled up or anything, and so it does, it does allow the water to go through. But again, this is all mulch material, there's nothing that would be considered any contamination here. It's all, it's mulching in water and dye.
So as the water runs through the permeable material, is it collected?
It just would go into the ground just like regular rainwater at this time. If it were, if it were to run off, and I don't think it will, it would go behind this, where the picture's taken, into the swale system, if there were any sheet flow across it. But I don't know that we'll ever have that, maybe on the, on the areas that has the millings, but for the most part, it's very pervious.
Okay. You mentioned two swales and then a ditch on the north. If you had a large amount of water, it would run into the, these two ditches?
Yes, sir, that's all off the page. I'm sorry we don't have a better picture, but it's over to the left of this page.
But that's okay. All right, so now you've got two ditches, and then you said it drains off?
The outfall would be to the north, so the way?
Okay, where does the outfall flow, run to?
It goes to the canal on the north side of the property at Orange Avenue.
It does go to a canal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, every property has an outfall, and this outfall's location would be to the north.
Okay. Well, the main thing, I want to be sure there wasn't standing water out there, and then where, if you had runoff, where does it go to? And it sounds like it'd be filtered before it got to the canal.
That's correct, and that's what we're required to do. I mean, every project that comes before this board is required to maintain and store their stormwater, and the only time it would ever outfall was, I think, in a hundred-year storms is when it would outfall. So we're going to maintain most of it on-site, and it would only be in that hundred-year storm where we would have to have an outfall.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Slade?
Mr. Rich?
Yes, sir.
How long you been at this, buddy? We've talked about this for a while. How long you, how long you been working on this?
I've been out there about two years. It was a bit of a challenge getting the building, the building, it was been, the place was abandoned for ten years. So, you know, the grass was ten feet tall, the building was, had no power to it, it was right across the street. So we started with the building and the ag area, which took a while, you know, to get all the permits re-upped and everything, and so we've been at it a couple of years, and the pastures didn't look like anything like that. My guy was mowing that pasture with a hundred-horse John Deere, and it disappeared in a hole because it was so high, you couldn't see what was there. So we dug the ponds, I actually have all the water coming off the roof of the building, one goes to the one pond, and one goes to the other, so all this great fresh water, we just got, refreshed those ponds. And I like to say the ag area is a little taller than the rest of it, there is no runoff from that recycling area that goes anywhere near the ag area. I actually have horses and some cows over there, so, and some little donkeys, so we want to keep them healthy. But?
There's the pigs, Rich.
Oh, yeah, I got Wilbur and Charlotte in there as well, and they're, they run around. That's why there's a big sign, you see it when you come in, it says, careful animals on property, because the pigs run all over the place. But, you know, we've got all good fences, I've got the electric gate up front, we've got some good lighting, just, you know, it's been, it's been a long process. And, you know, I've got a couple of last little things we need to do and to pass, and I would love to be open, you know. I think most people know us, you know, I've been in business a long time, I went to school here from, you know, grade one to finish, and it's just another piece of my puzzle. You know, we were paying a lot of money to dump, and you go in these, some of the other places, and, you know, I was losing a gas tank on a truck because logs are popping up, and you're getting stuck in the mud, and if it rains too much, they're closed, and that's why when I went into this, you know, first of all, it had the utility zoning, so I knew what I, it was proper, you know, I could do it there, and that's why we built it up the way we did. We have not had one issue in there, not one stuck truck, nothing overturned or any issues. You know, those grapples, you've got to put that boom way up in the air and dump them so they could be a little side-heavy, and like I said, it's just been working great.
Oh, I can, I can, I can say that I did see it at the beginning when Rich first bought it. I've been out there multiple times, I've seen it lately, he's done a fantastic job with it. I've seen a lot of dumps in this town through the years, and he's done a jam-up job out there, so.
Thank you, bud.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Slack?
I'm really glad to see all of this recycling rather than burning.
Thank you.
It's a service to our community as well as a good business angle.
Thank you.
So my question to you is, what happens to pile four, the mixed mulch, once you remove it from the site? Where does that go, and how is it used?
Okay, so pile four, pile one, the mixed, all the mixed mulch, we grind it, and then there's a company on the rez that's called JFE, John's Family Enterprises. Couple of the gentlemen that work out there, we've known for, since we were children. They take it, and they superheat it and mix it with human waste out there in the middle of nowhere, and then they sell it to wherever they sell it. So when it leaves my site, it never comes back, but it's being used, again, as a good form of an organic fertilizer instead of putting chemicals to everything. So, and we recently ground their site, they have, they bring debris in there as well, and I really got to spend a week there and see what they do with it, and it was really interesting, because they put in these giant vats, and they mix it, and it superheats it. So the invasive species in that mix doesn't bother them at all, because they're superheating it, and it, something with the wood makes it work better, the bigger sticks and stuff. So they like what we're doing, they like our mix, and like I say, they're chomping at the bit, they'll be coming out to take everything we ground today on four, it'll start leaving Monday, and that's like, and that's how I like to do it, we get it clear, we bulldoze it nice and level with a bulldozer, and I'd like to add too, we do keep about a half a foot to a foot of mulch on all the pads, and that absorbs, you know, like I say, any of the little dye that might come off of there. So by the time we bulldoze it and move it around, you know, you never see any of that, and it's, there's nothing interfering with, you know, or running off anywhere. So everything kind of stays there, and as we move it and mix it and, you know, send this to, you know, to John's and the good mulch, it's really clean, it's a really clean It's a really clean facility. It takes a lot of work, but it's very clean.
And the finished mulch product that you're producing onsite, where does that go? Are you selling it retail or providing it to customers?
I put most of it down through Sampson's or landscapers, you know, come in and get it and take it offsite and put it around houses. There's a lot of it goes to high-end houses out in Soul's Point, some of the, I only want to deal with a few people. I don't want to have everybody coming to my site. I have a few specific people that I deal with. So they'll bring like a load of veg and then load their grapple truck up with some mulch and bring it out. So it's like, we don't have multiple, multiple vehicles coming in. These guys are coming in, dumping a load and taking a load. And I offer free delivery. So when my truck comes in and dumped, the one you seen leaving, he might come full of veg. And then, hey, you know, Mr. Sturgis needs 50 yards of brown or, or Mr., you know, at Midway Scapes, we've been, we've been supplying him and he is a very, very picky gentleman. And he loves our brown and black. So it's, you know, we're coming in, we're dumping, we're loading, we're going. So instead of having that extra vehicle travel, we've really eliminated that down. It's a lot of coordination, but it's, it's really, it's working very well. So everything's being used. It's, you know, and we've always wanted to do this because it's like, man, look at all this good stuff we're sending to the dump, you know, that's getting burned or, you know, just processed into nothing. So it's, everything we got there is being used 100%.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Where do you get your supply from? Where do you get the wood from?
I currently employ over 50 people. So we have multiple tree crews out every day. A large maturity, majority of what's coming in is coming in through us. I really don't have anybody else dumping there at this point, just a couple of guys here and there, like I said, for, to come get mulch. But, so we're, you know, we're trimming houses. We do a lot of work for the county. We do a tremendous amount of work for the city, FPUA. I've got long-term contracts. So when we go do a job for like the city or the county, we're not just trimming around the house. We're trimming from here a mile down the road. So we're bringing a lot of product off of that. And so it all goes right there.
Mr. Low? So, so Mr. Sampson, this is, he's got Sampson Tree Company and this would be like another business. So, so he has one business feeding the other.
Basically created a solution for a problem yet.
A very expensive, it was a very expensive problem, I thought. And now it's like, if you look at everything there, it's really expensive, but it's, it's really working well. And I'm kind of in control of what's going on. It's, you know, it's, it's been, it's been working, the plan is working. So.
I just wanted to say one other thing. I mean, this, this rotor chopper, the, the machine that's here, it has actually a trailer that it'll fit on and he can tow this thing around town. So if you see it going around town, he's probably taking it to a big job somewhere. So it is, it is mobile. Not that it's going to stay, it might stay here all the time, but it does have the ability to move.
I've had it for nine months now, I think. I think we've only moved it twice. You know, my goal is to stay here and work full-time. I've actually got a great selection of some lighter knot there. Once I get that sorted out, you know, everybody looks for them odd pieces of lighter knot. Some of the bigger oak, we're going to get a mill to make boards, make block faces. There's so much more to, to do to keep this recycling going and using these products rather than just, you know, just say goodbye to them. So we're just getting started.
It's time to be in the lumber business.
You know how much fence boards are right now? The lumber business would be great.
I've got about a dumpster load full of my house I need trimmed out of my oak trees. Lots of mulch up there. Any other questions from the board for the applicant or staff? Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chair? There are no further comments. I'd like to make a motion.
You may do so.
Okay. I hereby move that the Planning and Zoning Commission of St. Lucie County recommend that the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners approve with conditions the application of Richard Sampson for a conditional use permit to develop and operate a land clearing and yard trash recycling operation within mulching in the utilities zoning district on the southwest five acres of the subject 8.38 acre property within the utilities zoning district because the conditional use permit meets the standards for review outlined in St. Lucie County Land Development Code, section 11.07.03, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan.
Seconded by Commissioner Slay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Munt?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridges? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Slay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Binner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Slack? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Lowndes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Taylor?
Yes, ma'am. Alright, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. There's no other business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We are adjourned.